Good morning, everyone. To formally introduce myself, my name is Alan Guighi Him, and I'm the Policy and Advocacy Associate with the Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits, SVCN. Today is actually a very extra special occasion because I get to welcome all of you to our very last of five nonprofit candidate forum. In today's forum, you might recognize some familiar faces because we have the absolute pleasure to be rejoined by both Santa Clara County Board Supervisor District One candidates Johnny Camus and Sylvia Arenas. Today, we will hear from both candidates on their views regarding multiple issues specifically in relation to its impact on children and families. Now, if possible, we encourage all participants to have their cameras on and to please make sure your microphones remain muted throughout the forum. As an organization, SVCN provides these candidate fora to help provide nonprofit leaders with the opportunity to learn more about the ideas, visions, and priorities of candidates for local office. We focus our discussion on issues that impact nonprofits as partners, government contractors, community-based service providers, and advocates. Now, when I go through today's guidelines, would absolutely love to learn who exactly is in the room with us. So please help us out by introducing yourself in the chat with your name, your pronouns, title, organization, and the native land that you reside on. As a continuous SVCN practice, I want to acknowledge that in San Jose, where I am today, I currently reside on the unceded lands of the Muwetma Aloni tribe. Together, let us commit to educating ourselves and advocating for indigenous peoples, communities neglected and displaced by the US government, and other colonial powers across the world. Since people here are tuning in from different areas, I encourage you to learn about what land you are living on by using the website my colleague will share in the chat and share that information in your introduction. For accessibility purposes, we do have the automated closed captioning feature in Zoom activated. With this, you do have the ability to move the captions around on your screen to a place more convenient, or you can simply disable the closed captioning feature entirely if you prefer to not just have it up. To do so, please reference the bar at the bottom of your Zoom as pictured on the slide. Click on Live Transcript on the right-hand side, and then click Hide Subtitles. If you're having tech or other problems during this session, please just private message me or any of my SVCN colleagues directly in the chat. And of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't take a minute to thank our wonderful co-hosts for today's forum, particularly a special shout-out and thank you to the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, Choose Children, Kids in Common, Strong Start Silicon Valley, South of Santa Clara County, and First Five Santa Clara County. All of them have been absolutely wonderful, and we wouldn't have done this without them. Now, I'm going to take a moment to pass it on to one of our sponsors that I just named from Choose Children, Christine Thorinson, who'll actually be sharing some brief remarks about Choose Children and why intentional spaces like today's forum mean so much to each of our partner organizations, to the nonprofit ecosystem, and just to the communities that we serve. And I'll pass it to you, Christine.
Thank you, Alan. On behalf of Choose Children and Silicon Valley Community Foundation, welcome to today's candidate forum. First, I'd like to thank Kira, Alan, and the great SVCN team for all you've done to put this forum together. We're honored to collaborate with SVCN and the other amazing partners and co-hosts for this event. And I'd really like to thank the candidates for Santa Clara County District One Supervisor for joining us this morning. I know you are very busy, and everyone's got a lot on their plate, but we really appreciate that you are engaging in conversation on key issues for children and families in our county. Choose Children, an initiative of Silicon Valley Community Foundation, is a partnership of organizations and individuals committed to creating a bright future in San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties for our children and families. We work to champion babies, toddlers, preschoolers, and ensure that elected officials and candidates for office take action and support investment and approaches that advance the well-being, care, and learning of young children, and support their families and the essential workers who care for them. Choose Children is a nonpartisan and nonendorsing initiative that uses the opportunity provided by an election to elevate issues important to our young children and give them a voice in our future. Our kids need us. We have a responsibility to ensure that young children begin their lives healthy, safe, and ready to succeed in school and life. But we need our kids even more. The economic vibrancy of our region relies on making it a place where families with young children see a future for themselves. When we work together to ensure that young children and their families are supported, the impacts are far-reaching and long-lasting. We see better educational and career outcomes for our next generation, greater economic security and mobility for our early-care workforce and their families, and a robust and just local economy. We are looking forward to today's discussion, and thank you all for joining us. And Alan, I'll pass it back to you.
All right. Then thank you so much, Christine. I really appreciate that, and really like level setting the space for us and saying like why it's so important to so many of us. Moving us right along, I'd like to now introduce our moderator for today's forum, Fred Ferrer, CEO of Child Advocates of Silicon Valley. A CEO of Child Advocates of Silicon Valley, Fred leads the organization's advocacy efforts to support foster children throughout the county, leading efforts to strengthen the court-appointed Special Advocate CASA program in Santa Clara County. Fred has added new community partnerships, enrichment programs, and child assessments in just his first three years at Child Advocates. He leads the agency's efforts and his commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. In addition, he also has over three decades of nonprofit leadership experience, having led numerous groundbreaking programs, public policy, and systems reform initiatives. And with that, I'll pass it to Fred.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Alan, and welcome to our candidates. Now, before we begin, I'll be explaining the ground rules regarding the timing and the format of today's fora. Audience members, we ask that you please remain on mute while the candidates are speaking throughout the forum. Candidates, you each will have two minutes for your opening statements. Afterwards, I'll be asking you a series of both SVCN and audience pre-submitted questions. You both will have 1 minute and 30 seconds to answer each question, plus an optional 30 seconds each for rebuttal, if you choose to take it. Candidates, if you'd like to make a rebuttal, please indicate by raising your virtual hand over Zoom, so I can hopefully see it. Please note that we will only be pausing for rebuttals upon request. After I, as moderator, call on you to make your rebuttal, please pause before answering to let our staff have time to change the timer. For the convenience of the candidates and our audience members tuning in, we will also be dropping the questions in the chat live time as they're asked. During the forum, we will also be including a lightning round of questions, which will be a mixture of fun topics and policy-related topics that'll require a yes or no answer, or a very short, one-sentence-or-less response. After asking a few more questions, we'll finish up by each candidate sharing their closing statements, which will they'll have up to 1 minute each to do so. Throughout the forum, candidates will be speaking on a rotating basis, for example Johnny, and then Sylvia on one question, Sylvia, and then Johnny on the next question, and so forth until we end the forum. Audience members, you have some options of how you can view your screen. If you want to view only the speakers, leave it the setting as it is. If you shared screen with your, the timer looks too big for you on your screen, you can toggle over that middle line over to the left, so the speakers are bigger and the timer is smaller. And one final note to our candidates, please remember to be respectful both to your fellow candidate and to the time limits attached allotted to each answer. For your convenience, we'll have a timer on the screen, so you can visually see how much time you have to answer each question. With that being said, I'd like to introduce our candidates Sylvia Arenas and Johnny Camus. Welcome, candidates. You each have 2 minutes for your opening statements, and we're going to start this morning with Johnny.
Thank you for having me, and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss my views on how to protect and help children in our community. Most people don't know, but I came here as a child. I was a refugee from Beirut, Lebanon. I came here when I was 8 years old, and I struggled to learn a new language. English was, you know, a new language to me and my parents, and we faced discrimination, especially at school. My family, at one point, lived in subsidized housing, and I worked at Safeway all through my high school and my career as a college student at San Jose State University. After I left San Jose State, I worked for 20 years as a financial advisor, building my own business. And I only got into politics because I thought that the monies from our city could be managed better. As a council member, I looked at our debts, and I helped save millions of dollars for taxpayers. I worked to increase the number of police officers. When I first came in, we only had 900 police officers. When I left, it was 1150. And I took care of my district, having numerous meetings throughout my district every month and did newsletters twice a month. I'm running for supervisor because I have a plan to reduce homelessness. I have a plan to reduce crime, and I have a plan to get results. I've actually been so proud of having so much bipartisan and nonpartisan support in this race, because people like my ideas. I have the support of the San Jose Mercury News. I have the support of outgoing supervisor Mike Wasserman, Sam Licardo, 3/4 of the Morgan Gilroy City Council, and numerous organizations throughout District One. I'm hoping that all of you can support my effort to become our next supervisor, Johnny Camus.
Thank you, Johnny. And now Sylvia.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for bringing us together on a very important topic and the one that is very close to my heart. So I'm a council member, and I've been a council member for six years. I have two years left, and as soon as I realized that I qualified to run for the Board of Supervisors, I jumped into this race. And I did that because I have been really laser-focused on the needs and families of families and children in our community, especially in the city of San Jose. And so I know that there's a crisis at this moment that all of our families are facing, that our children are facing, and all those, the paths to the solutions are all centered, I feel, at the county. I never meant to be a politician, but this is what I'm doing in order to move my agenda and to make sure that our children and our families stay within our community. I don't enjoy politics. I consider myself a public servant, and when I first ran, I ran because my son wasn't getting the support services that he needed in his district. And so there's nothing like an issue making you angry, wanting to do something about it. And that's what I continue to do. I've been inspired to roll up my sleeves and work to make real system changes. And actually, my office and my team has worked really hard, and we've done that. We've done that jointly with the county and on our own, where city departments are now, like Housing, Police, and Parks have finally adopted new policies that truly invest and take in consideration the needs of our vulnerable children. So from addressing homelessness, expanding access to healthcare, and solving the childcare crisis, so many of the next steps, I really need to be at the county, and I feel like I will best serve our community if they will have me, and I hope to earn your support and partnership.
Thank you, candidates, for your opening statements. Well, now we're going to begin our question-and-answer period with our first question, and a reminder you have 1 minute and 30 seconds to respond. First question. Santa Clara County has become an increasingly financially challenging place to raise a family. Over the last decade, as the overall population has grown, our population of children birth to age 5 has actually declined by nearly 10%. A recent public survey by Choose Children 2022 revealed that 3 in 4 general election voters doubt whether future generations will be able to afford living in our community. The question, what are your top 3 priorities to address the needs of children and families and make Santa Clara County a place where families with children can live and thrive? Sylvia?
Thank you for the question. I am actually one of those members of the community that question whether my children will be able to live down the street from me, or even across the whole city, and visit together in the future. So we've lost many of our children, and there's been this huge exodus even before the pandemic hit, where our vulnerable communities were really destabilized. My son's school closed about 2 years ago, and schools continue to close. And so one of the things that we need to make sure is that we support the families and the children that are here. And one of the ways to do that is rent stabilization. There's nothing like having a stable home in order to create that stability for children, and then including the child well-being and making sure that those children are connected to health insurance and to after-school or informal care, which is another thing that I'm focused on in the city, and I will continue to be focused on as a county supervisor, is to make sure that there are safe places for our children to be after school. Many of our families have multiple jobs, and we need to make sure that they continue to be safe. So a healthy child will be a healthy future for San Jose, and we need to invest in early childhood and childcare. So those are some of the items that I'll be focused on.
Thank you.
Yeah, can you hear me? So, yes, the top 3 things, I think, is what you asked for about what we would do. And one thing that I've actually proposed and written articles on many things, I've written on reducing the costs of construction, is to reduce fees. I worked as a council member in the city of San Jose to reduce ADU fees and reduce construction fees while in office. And on IDUs, we went from 30 ADUs, those are auxiliary dwelling units, to 600 in the last 6 months. So deregulating and reducing fees is one of the best ways that we can get more housing. Buying with our, you know, huge amounts of money, we have tons of money at the county and the city, quite frankly. And we need to buy instead of just build. We need to build, but we also need to look at ways that we can increase our inventory of low-income housing quickly, and that one way is buying. And of course, we need to fund these first-time home programs that we have a little bit of money in. There's nothing that can secure the future of future generations than to have a piece of real estate that you own. And I've been very supportive of giving, you know, forgivable loans to people who are first-time buyers, helping them with their down payments, and other things that I've done memos on when I was a council member, and I hope to continue giving people a hand up, an opportunity to own a home.
Thank you. In recent years, California's state government has significantly increased funding for early childhood education and supports for young children and their caregivers. However, after years of chronic underfunding, these increases are still not enough to build and maintain a robust mixed-delivery system of early care and learning in Santa Clara County. What revenue strategies would you support that would add more resources for early learning in our communities? Johnny, I'll start with you.
Well, you know, the county has $11.5 billion annually. And just last year, we looked at, I just got this from a memo from Otto Lee and Susan Ellenberg, we actually didn't spend $102 million on mental health services. We need to look at what the county's bringing in already. Look at programs that aren't working, and cut them and create programs that are working, quite frankly. We need to look at creating measurability, measurable outcomes, so that we are making sure that the programs that we are funding are actually serving our children, our families, and making sure that they're getting the support that they need. For example, I was very supportive of mental health services being created in high schools. Now, that program could be expanded dramatically with the extra $102 million that they actually had left over last year, and they had $188 million the year before. So we need to look at the funds that we already have before we look for new ways to create revenue. I think that this area is very expensive, and I'm not very supportive of any new taxes and fees, because I think that we have money, and we just need to look at better ways that we can spend it, quite frankly.
Thank you, Johnny. Sylvia?
So sorry, couldn't get to the mute button. Thank you for the question. Of course, I believe in investing in our future, investing in our workforce, because basically, our children are going to be our future and our workforce, and we have to figure out how to provide opportunities so that they could fulfill their full potential. And that really begins in childhood. I worked for First Five for 10 years. I'm really proud to have done that. With many of you all who are on screen today, we all understand that early investments in childhood really pay off down the road and into the future. And so as we see less children, we need to make sure, in our cities, in our county, in this valley, we need to make sure that we invest in those children. I would strongly support going to the voters to create an ongoing revenue source for childcare and preschool in our county. At the same time that the state is looking to expand preschool, this would really create a local match that would give us a tremendous opportunity for our children. In the city of San Jose, I've secured stipends for our childcare providers during the pandemic. Each of our providers received $10,000 so that we can stabilize them. I know it's not the whole solution, but it helped. I also secured about $20 million for childcare, informal and formal, as well as after-school programs.
Thank you. Question number 3 is, without childcare, parents can't go to work. In June, Governor Newsom signed a state budget that makes state childcare subsidies available to families of 4 who earn up to $112,000 a year, which is great news. However, Santa Clara County suffers a gap of more than 17,000 licensed childcare slots. Potential providers struggle to find childcare teachers that they need to meet this demand. What would you do to help build the early learning and care workforce and give all parents in our county quality care options for their babies, toddlers, and young children? Sylvia?
Thank you. I think that's a very important question, one that I had to struggle with with my children. My youngest is 7, and so what I had was informal care at home through my mother-in-law, and that's what many families rely on. But they also rely on informal childcare outside of their home, and then licensed childcare, of course, for providers. And so by helping each of these different levels of providers and caregivers, we elevate the quality of care regardless of where our children are. And we need to make sure that not only do we feed the system for licensed childcare providers, but that we also feed the system informal care, because the reality is that our communities are also relying on those sources. And so one of the things that we are doing in the city of San Jose is we have informal care grant with the Grail, as well as our own that we are funding through First Five, family, friends, and neighbors. And ultimately, we want them to obtain that license. We want them to elevate their understanding and support for our children. And so these are steps that we can begin to take to expand our workforce. I know that the county is spearheading a lot of the workforce development, and I look forward to seeing how that evolves.
Thanks, Sylvia.
Yeah, I have a track record of working with nonprofits like the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Clubs. I think that's a great way to expand services quickly and with licensed care. For example, in my own district, we actually, it didn't even benefit my own district directly, we helped fund an after-school program at Amaden Elementary School, which was not in my district, through the YMCA, where we worked with them to create after-school programs and summer learning programs, so that families can actually stay working throughout the summer without worrying about their children, and so that the children won't have that loss of knowledge over the summertime. I think that Santa Clara County could easily fund some of these programs with nonprofits. You know, we did, as Sylvia mentioned, at the city of San Jose, we actually funded a lot of after-school programs, and we worked with our libraries to create programs, education, after-school things as well. And I think the county could easily supplement some of these ideas and work with the cities within the district to help provide all these services. I know that the YMCA program in Gilroy is working well, although the children have to drive all the way to Morgan Hill. So it's important for us to have services where the children are, and so that family can take advantage of them. So look for a way to expand services with existing nonprofits.
Staggeringly some fun and some more serious topics, each to be answered with a yes or no, or response of one sentence or less. We'll start with candidate Sylvia Arenas, and then alternate candidates between for each question. Sylvia, we'll start with you. What's your favorite animal movie?
Wait, what did you say?
What's your favorite animated movie?
Oh, Baby Boss.
Johnny, your favorite animated movie?
The Incredibles.
Okay, next question. What is your favorite parks within your district, Sylvia?
Oh, my gosh, everybody's going to get mad at me, but Evergreen Park, because it's my neighborhood park.
Good qualification. Johnny, what's your favorite park within your district?
Well, I don't know if it's completely in my district, but the Almeden Lake, I walk with my mom every day.
Awesome. If you have one superpower, what would it be, Johnny?
To bring peace to the regions of the earth that are in war.
Sylvia, if you had one superpower, what would it be? Sylvia?
I think to continue to be a mom. I think that's the superpower.
Awesome. Okay, what was the last Halloween costume you wore, Sylvia?
It was a cowboy with a big oversized hat.
Johnny, what was the last Halloween costume you wore?
I think I was a priest.
Okay, I'm going to move right along. What was your favorite children's book, either from your own childhood, or one that you'd like to read to children today? Johnny?
I actually wrote my own children's book called Coasty and the Raydrop Adventure, which I have donated to libraries all over San Jose.
Sylvia, what's your favorite child book, either your own childhood, or one that you'd like to read to children today?
Well, one that I'd love to read to both of my kids was Good Night Moon, and there was another one, I'm going to insert this, it was bilingual, English and Spanish.
Awesome. What's your favorite cartoon, Sylvia?
What is it? The Titans? I forget what they're called, but I have many of them because I watch them with my daughter.
Okay. Johnny, what's your favorite cartoon?
I admit, I haven't watched cartoons for quite some time, but I grew up on Popeye.
There you go. There you go, exactly.
Teen Titans.
Okay. The last, the lightning round is, what's a good piece of advice that you were given as a child? Johnny?
Work hard. Work hard, and you'll achieve.
Great, thank you. Sylvia?
My mom always used to say, "You can because you are a woman." It wasn't necessarily a feminist remark, but I made it as one.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate that. That's our lightning round. Candidates, your opportunity to get to know us, get to know you a little bit better. And we have 2 more questions left for the forum. Both of you have been elected officials and community leaders for many years. Please give an example of the direct impact of an action you took in your current or former elected role that resulted in the improvement of children's lives. Sylvia?
I'm really proud of the work that I've been doing jointly with the county. We realized that there was a trend of sexual assaults for children under the age of 13 for over 10 years, and it wasn't part of the Me Too movement, it can't be. Children under 13 do not have intimate partners. And we created a lot of awareness around this in joint meetings, and for the very first time, the city of San Jose met in committee with the Committee of Children and Families and Seniors in the county, and with this brought a very formal process and motions that our administration can carry on. And through that, there's a work plan. We produced the Children's Advocacy Center through those efforts. I helped establish a sexual violent unit that we didn't have for the city of San Jose. Police officers and investigators both received training for trauma-informed training that pertains to children, trauma. There's a lot of awareness now, I think, with our police officers and our investigators around what stressors look like for children and how to interact with them when there's official police business. So that's one of my efforts that I'm really proud of.
Awesome. Johnny?
Well, I've done a lot of work with schools and what have you, but one of the things in after-school programs, and one of the things that I'm most proud of, is concentrating my efforts in one of our lowest-income areas called the Hafen Viamonte. That area had a lot of That area had a lot of underserved families and I concentrated on making their lives better by making them safer. We, I worked, uh, and we, we empowered those families by bringing, um, bringing them at, uh, more resources, especially police resources. And we turned that one, at one time, that area was a gang hotspot. We reduced crime so much, it is no longer a gang hotspot. And many of the families that we organized to create a, um, a homeowners associate, a home, um, a renters association. Uh, they are, you know, they are succeeding. Uh, when I first came into office, the children weren't so afraid to go outside because of drug dealing and violence. Now that I've seen some of the children actually graduating Pioneer House High School. And it makes me very proud that, um, that, that these families live in a much safer neighborhood. Um, and that they are allowed to have the opportunities that other families do. I also am very proud of the efforts that we've done with the YMCA to create after school programs, especially near that neighborhood to keep the children. Um, educated even in the summertime and giving families the opportunities to work while their children have safe, uh, safe after school programs.
Awesome. We have a couple more questions here. Um, Don Taylor from Pacific Clinic submitted this question. Stress and anxiety levels have risen substantially during the pandemic. And these mental health strains have landed disproportionately on young people and essential workers. Including early childhood and after school providers. The Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors recently declared mental health and sub- as substance emergency. What is your perspective on the current state of youth and family behavioral health services? And the county's approach? And what would be your initial steps as a new supervisor Johnny?
Well, as, as I said previously, um, I have been looking at mental health services for quite some time. I, I, I pushed for the implementation of Laura's Law, which is temperature, temporary conservatorship laws. I want to expand the mental health capacities of high schools to deal with kids who are depressed. I could tell you that my own kids suffered through depression during this shutdown. And we are very, very, we were very nervous about having them. Do something horrible like commit suicide. So it's, it's really, really important for our kids to have the, the place and the space. To, uh, come in and talk about what's bothering them. Um, and I will push for more expansion of these services in our high schools. I will also take a look at the budget and, and, and find out why we ended up with more than a hundred. We ended up with hundreds of millions of dollars of unspent funds to see if we can make sure that we can improve. Uh, mental health services throughout, even with the police going out to calls. We need to make sure that the police, uh, when they go out to met, you know, 5150s, basically mental health checks. Uh, that they have experts and they don't turn these, um, these calls into something more violent and. Uh, which, which is, which, what often happens in police, uh, with, with, with mental health calls. I want to make sure that people aren't being killed, um, you know. Prevent people from being killed, uh, by misunderstandings. Those are some of the things that I'm going to look at.
Thanks Johnny. Sylvia?
Well, the pandemic really amplified pre-existing barriers that our children have and our communities have. Um, these are structural, these are, you know, poverty, these are all the isms that we can think of. Intergenerational trauma, um, racial inequities. Um, and so the, the problem was there even before the pandemic, but, uh, and now it's been exacerbated in a way that, um, folks, uh, you know, are waiting on, uh, to, to see, uh, a counselor for weeks on end, and that might be, uh, too late for some of our children. And so it's important for all of our families to be able to access behavioral health. And we should be able to look at some of the hubs that we already have in our community. One is our schools. And so expanding the school link services. Program which, um, not every school has, it is a little expensive, it is a little a mo- a more investment, but that is what we need to do. We need to have these kinds of investments early on. Um, we need to make sure that, that we have preventative care for our elementary school children to figure out how to de-stress. And a lot of those messages I think are getting through, but we also need to support our nonprofit providers substantially with their employees and their infrastructure. Um, and their capacity to, to be able to serve, um, and compensate those folks in those fields.
Thank you. Our next question moves us to facilities. There's no dedicated public funding stream for early learning facilities. When the state announced a facilities grant program for preschool and childcare providers in March. They receive applications for almost four times as much funding as they had budgeted. What will you do to ensure that childcare providers can find and afford space to house quality programs Sylvia?
Thank you. Um, within the $20 million that I secured for children and youth last November through our ARPA money. Um, I worked with library and planning and, and including our mayor, uh, to create a funding stream that would build childcare spaces in storefronts. Um, for new affordable housing development. So we took that into consideration. This is part of the awareness and the learning from our staff. Um, to, uh, to take a look at how do we serve the families who are out there? Um, we, what we also did was we, um, expanded, um, uh, opportunities for our childcare providers to receive stipends through, uh, the network of folks that collaborated with. So I talked about the stipends that we received for, uh, that we provided for childcare providers. And on a county basis through the first five, through County Office of Ed and many others, we were able to, um, collectively as a region provide stipends, um, so that, uh, our, so that we could just stabilize our childcare providers. But we're also taking a look at our community centers and seeing what it costs to upgrade some of our community centers. Especially those that are, um, under contract with, uh, an organization that may not be maximizing the space. Um, so taking a look at those spaces in order to expand our informal, um, recreational preschool.
Johnny?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm a big proponent of, of making sure that we take a look at the county's own space. Um, to, to, to create services and help, um, providers expand into them. I, I, I liken the example of what the YMCA did with the city of, uh, Morgan Hill. They literally used a facility, um, that is, uh, the, the recreation center for the, for the city. And created a program for youth. This is something that we can actually duplicate using other county-owned, uh, buildings. And I'm, uh, that was, would be one of the areas that we should be looking at. Another area is to take a look at, at, you know, I have to tell you, I had two, uh, uh, two, uh, childcare providers set up shop in Almeden Valley when I was a council member. And the permitting and regulations around that were so laborious. It'll actually took more than a year to get some of these, uh, programs up and running. We need to look at ways to streamline the permitting process. And so that, so that some of these providers can actually utilize, uh, existing spaces. A lot of shopping centers are now, you know. I mean, have a lot of spaces open. Unfortunately, the economy has gone that, the wrong direction. So we need to look at the areas that we can do something about, like the regulations and, um, and speeding up permitting.
Thanks Johnny. The la- next question is, our county recently established the Office of Disability Affairs. To address the gaps in healthcare, civic access, economic opportunities, education, overall quality of life. For South Bay citizens with disabilities. What's the county's role in creating an inclusive community for children with disabilities and their parents Johnny?
Well, I've been supportive of the county's efforts to, to work with, you know, uh, existing, uh, organizations like the San Andreas Center. Like, um, you know, uh, making sure that we provide services. In, in fact, in my own district in the Almeden Valley. We helped, we used a grant from the county to create an all-inclusive playground. Uh, that, you know, we were still funding before I left office and I think it's, it's predominantly funded. I actually brought, you know, nonprofit organizations together like the Kiwanis and, you know, the service organizations, the Rotary Kiwanis, the Lions Clubs. We all were chipping in and raising money to expand, uh, you know, the all-inclusive playground in the Almeden Valley. And the Kiwanis did the same thing, working with the county and the city in Morgan Hill to create an all-inclusive playground there. So services, uh, for, for children with, with, um, various abilities and, um, need to be expanded. And I will continue to look for ways, uh, to help, uh, folks with, um, disabilities.
Thanks Johnny. Sylvia?
In the same way that we're considering, um, childcare facilities or adaption, uh, a- adaptation to childcare. Uh, facilities and storefronts, uh, of affordable housing. We also need to take a look at how to adapt playgrounds, how to adapt just the, the, the overall environment. Not only in affordable housing, but in market rate housing. Um, we need to continue to, um, create awareness about this need. Um, and that we, you know, that our, our children and, and their parents aren't driving all the way across town to Prush Park. Uh, to the inclusive playground there or in Gilroy, uh, there is an inclusive playground there and that, uh, uh, that was because of the leadership and partnership, uh, for the grant, for grants, uh, of inclusive playgrounds. Um, with, I think, that council, I mean Supervisor Semidian, um, was the one who, who started this. I actually, um, applied for one of those parks to be in, in my district. We didn't get it. Uh, Prush Park did receive, uh, the funding. And I think it was about $20 million in expanding access. Uh, but matching grants through the cities, the local cities is one opportunity to, um, uh, make sure that we have an inclusive community, but we need to also continue to just have a conversation about the different needs of our children. Through, and make these kinds of conversations, uh, kitchen table conversations.
Thank you. In spite of the investments in digital access that occurred during the pandemic. A digital divide still exists for low-income children and youth in Santa Clara County. What steps should the county take to address the disparity of opportunity in digital access? For low-income children and youth Sylvia?
Sure. Uh, one of the things that I'm also proud of is the work that we did around, um, digital inclusion. And this was because a lot of our school board members, um, created, uh, or developed a letter. Asking us for support, for infrastructure support. And the city of San Jose had a digital inclusion plan that would, um, uh, build out, uh, community wifi. And, um, th- throughout our, our neighborhoods in a 10-year span, but we needed to do it right away. And with, with the, uh, really good partnership of, of the different, um, districts. What we were able to do is match some funding and, um, and, uh, advocate for optic, um, fiber optics. And some of the schools that were planned to, uh, like Silver Creek and Mount Pleasant, they were planned to, to, to have this done years and years, uh, later. But what we did is, is created, um, a group of advocates. Um, and those many, many of those are, are here in this group now. Um, and because of that leadership, we were able to, to move this forward. And so now there's going to be community wifi, um, that was meant to, uh, get developed in 10 years in a stretch of like three years. So I'm really proud of that. We also had joint, uh, efforts with the county. We provided, um, devices to our students and the county provided the hotspots, or I think vice versa. Um, so that was another effort that we, we did to make sure that we started including our children.
Thank you Sylvia.
Yeah, I was the head of the Economic Development Committee, which actually was tasked to work with, uh, you know, the, the 5G. Network carriers to, um, loan out the infrastructure, like our light poles to increase 5G. And use the money that there were going to be leased, you know, the, the, the lease money for those, uh, light poles. Uh, to throw back into programs like creating a free, free wifi for, you know, at-risk youth. And increase the wifi capa- abilities in some of the areas, uh, in the city, in the underdeveloped, um, uh, underserved neighborhoods. Um, I could tell you that South County is very, very rural and the wifi network is horrible. And I am committed to making sure that, um, uh, we improve the wifi, wifi network in South County. Um, I will use my connections with all the, uh, carriers. I actually worked with all of them, AT&amp;T, um, uh, T-Mobile, uh, and Verizon all came to my office talking to me. And I will call them all up again and ask them to expand services down in Morgan Hill and Gilroy and San Martin. Because those are, those are wifi deserts. And, uh, quite frankly, we cannot serve that community, um, at all unless we, um, unless we make sure that the, the, the infrastructure exists to begin with. So you have my commitment to making sure that our district, District One, uh, receives the attention it needs. For creating the network that it needs to provide everyone, um, everyone with, with wifi.
Thank you. And our final question before your closing statements today. All California students pursuing higher education and career pathways should have access to an affordable education. And the ability to achieve economic security. Yet high cost of higher education and career training programs, along with economic hardships exasperated by COVID-19. Has caused many students to cancel their education and career training plans. What role should the county play in ensuring that children and youth have access to college and great careers Johnny?
Well, I, I worked with Mayor Sam Licardo, um, to actually get corporations to help pay, uh, for, uh, for sponsoring kids to go through, uh, the community college programs. And right now residents of San Jose can go to community college for free. Uh, we need to look for ways to expand programs, work with, uh, work with corporations to help fund programs. In fact, we should actually fund many of the programs directly, especially the ones, uh, at San Jose State. Where, where we were hoping to attract people in the mental health industry to come work for the county. But we should also be looking at ways to, um, uh, pay off student loans for people who want to come work for the county with the degrees that we need in health, health services, mental health. Um, counseling services. We should be looking for ways, as we did in the police, for the Police Department of San Jose. We actually provided them a, uh, sign-on bonus where we gave them extra money if they stayed a certain number of years. We can do the same thing with student loans, paying off the student loans over a certain period of years if they decide to work for the county. So there are many ideas that I want to work on to, um, attract and retain talent and provide, uh, the necessary, uh, you know, tuition support for kids who want to get the, you know, degrees. And so, uh, working with the business community, I think, uh, will help a lot.
Thank you. And Sylvia?
Yeah, this is a question that really plagues me. And as the Chair of Neighborhood Services and Education, um, Committee. I, I decided to use that position to really, um, coordinate and elevate the kind of programs that we're offering or use in a way that makes sense. Sometimes we come up with these programs because we are not thinking about our children, we're thinking about the problem, right? We want to fix the problem, so we develop a program that we think it's going to fix the problem. But we don't go to, uh, the origin of some of the issues, which takes a lot of work. Um, what I've, uh, been doing as a Chair of NSC is develop, um, a youth, a child and youth master plan. So if I've asked all of our departments who have anything to do with, uh, children and youth services. To develop logic models, um, to make sure that they have a master plan. Uh, a strategic plan that allows, uh, a cradle to career, um, framework. Um, so that we don't, um, inadvertently create these spaces where our children fall out from under, right? Um, there's programs that we have had during the summer where it's a six-week work program at Google. But those children from, you know, mainly from the east side, don't know how to get to the other side of that door to Google. They just don't have those opportunities and, and our, um, system, uh, planning will be able to, to provide that kind of, um, pathway.
Thank you. That was our last question. And now our candidates will have one minute each to say their closing remarks. We'll start with Johnny.
Thank you again for the opportunity to exchange ideas. You know, I, I, as a former city council member, I've been a leader on fiscal responsibility. You know, I, I, as a former city council member, I've been a leader on fiscal responsibility. And I have been a leader on mental health and drug addiction issues. We can't continue doing the same things, working on the same ideas that haven't worked and expect different results. As your next supervisor, I'll push for fact-based solutions on homelessness, reducing crime and work on reducing, providing more services, inpatient services for the mentally ill and the drug addicted that are homeless and are on our streets. Our rehabilitation system is broken. We need to fix that as well. I'll push for new ideas on reducing crime by training people, giving them skills while they're incarcerated, before they leave the incarceration system. I'm hoping that all of you can join me on pushing for new ideas to solve our growing problems. Vote for Johnny Kems.
Thank you Johnny. Sylvia?
So I have, and I think I mentioned this in my intro, I've spent my entire career working to make sure that this county, this city has and hosts families with opportunities to succeed and to stay in our community. And I've done, I believe, my part in, in different capacities from youth intervention to working at First Five, to serving on the Evergreen School Board, working with Gardner Family Health Center and on council. And each was an opportunity to help families like my own succeed. It does not come easy for our families. Each of us know somebody who's already left our neighborhood and they are irreplaceable. So I, if I have the opportunity to serve as supervisor, I will treat this opportunity as what really is. And it's an absolutely unrivaled chance to make a difference for children and families in our community. That's what you can expect with me.
Thank you Sylvia. I want to say thank you to both our candidates for your participation today. I appreciate the opportunity to moderate today and I'll pass it back to Alan for closing statements.
All right, and thank you so much Sylvia. Johnny, thank you so much for joining us today. We really appreciate you both sharing your advocacy and your plans to support children and families throughout the county. And of course, a special shout out to our amazing moderator Fred Ferrer, who's been absolutely wonderful at moderating today's forum. All of your time is appreciated and we're so happy to have you join us. And once again, and most of all, a huge thank you to all of our attendees for making it out today, as well as our sponsors of this forum, the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, Choose Children, Kids in Common, Strong Start Santa Clara County, and First Five Santa Clara County. As a nonprofit association, we want to make sure that we try our best to be accessible to you all as best as possible. Please reference the information listed here on the slide to best inform you all on how to best contact our team. Your feedback and suggestions really do help us improve the ways that we serve the sector. This concludes our nonprofit candidate for our series Five Out of Five. And thank you so much for joining us today. All of the recordings will be posted on our YouTube page and we'll be sure to announce them as soon as they become available. Thank you so much, everybody, and we hope to see you at our future events.